Yeah, we can go. Alright, let's call the meeting to order. It's at six o'clock. Welcome everyone that's here. Some wobbly faces we have today. Alright, roll call. Alicia.
Here.
James.
Present.
Lee.
Here.
Ma'am.
Here.
And myself. Alright. The notice of the regular school board meeting on Wednesday, February fifteenth at two thousand twenty-three at six o'clock in room thirty-two of the Rochelle School District at three forty-six West Randall in Rochelle. Members of the public may also view and listen to the open session portion of the meeting. There is a link that you can go on YouTube to see. Statement of the purpose. The purpose of this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in pub- in public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Okay, first thing we have is the approval of the agenda. James says first.
I'll second it.
Okay, Lee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? May? And state? Okay, the motion was carried. How are you doing Trisha? Got it?
Yep, I'm doing fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular board meetings from January sixteenth. Does anybody have any concerns or questions or anything about that? If not, I'll move the motion.
I'll motion.
Okay, Alicia, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Lee. All those in favor of approving the minutes for the regular board meeting on January sixteenth? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, abstained. Motion was carried. Approval of bills with financial statements. We have them all there. So there's the check summaries for general fund, check summaries for student activity funds, revenue summary for general fund, revenue expense detail, student activity accounts, and revenue expense summary for student activity accounts. Does anybody have any questions or did you all get a good time to look at them?
I will say that Rachel called in earlier and said she was gonna be late this morning because she was feeling ill, was gonna try to come in at eleven, and then text again around eleven-thirty and said, "I just, I can't make it." So she's out of date. So we'll do our best between myself and I'll volunteer Mary and Aaron if there's any questions about the financials. If there are, we'll do our best to answer.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I got a question here. On page three.
Yeah.
Enchanted Forest. We paid a thousand dollars to put on that show to the fair- for the community from the fairgrounds.
That's what it says, yeah. It's the rental.
Is it the rental of the farm?
It's a thousand dollars or?
Well, the building.
The building, yes.
Yeah, I thought, when I looked at it, why don't they donate that for?
Well, could you get on that for next year, please? See if we can get them to donate it?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, I, because we just got a contract and we gotta pay for the fairgrounds for the fireworks now.
Oh.
So they're squeaking for money.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I did have a question that, and I don't know what page it is, it's just number fifty-two thirty-one, which I know I talked to Dennis about, but I wanted to clarify that sixteen tickets for the WIAA girls' basketball, those reimbursement, does that come from the girls' basketball program or is it coming from somewhere else? Do you know? I mean?
It is. Yep, so I did talk with the coach about that. It's treated as a field trip. It's a volunteer afternoon. Here in the district, we paid for a coach, an assistant coach to go, and we do that for all sports. In this case, there was, there was a field trip to go see the Division Five final game because that would be our division, and it's a voluntary trip, and the money is coming from the student activity account. So the students have raised the money, the students, the money is being spent on those students. So it's nothing to do with this, nothing to do with their school account. It's a student activity account.
It's from the basketball account?
It's from the basketball account, yeah.
Okay. Now, that was my other question that I got. And then I guess the other one was, which Dennis clarified for me, but there was the student activity accounts where there was refunds for the speed trip, and I didn't understand how that went. Those people paid ahead of time and then they came back and they got reimbursed because they did go, but they had to pay ahead of time. So, alright. So, and those are all the things that I needed to clarify. There are more chairs over there if you'd like to go get those. That would be fine. So, I just need a motion if everybody's okay to approve all those accounts?
I'll make it. I'll second it.
Okay, Ma'am. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? And no objections? The motion was carried. Okay. And now we are on to public comment. The public forum provides the public with the opportunity to ask questions about or address issues included on the school board meeting agenda. The board president will establish general operating rules once the number of people wishing to speak is identified on the night of the meeting. Prior to addressing the board, please clearly state your name, your address, and share with the board what agenda item you are speaking to the board on. We will ask that you please refrain from identifying specific persons in your comments. So, right now I only have two people on here wishing to speak, and one is Randy Meyer and one is Alan Huffman. Do either one of you want to speak?
I'm ready.
You okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Huffman?
Yeah, this is our only time to speak, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you wanna come up there and just state your name and your address and?
Sit down on the chair.
You sure can, whatever, whatever you want.
Alan Huffman, address is one eight-four three seven-two County Road VB, Galloway, Wisconsin. I'm here to talk about adding girls wrestling as a sport. Luke's gonna cover a bunch of stuff, whether you guys decide to or not. I asked, had a meeting in December with the A.D. and superintendent for Wittenburg because that's where my daughters go to school right now. My boys go to school at Saint Albert's right here. So we're kinda in between both communities and whatnot. So, we had the meeting. It was about an hour. They said they would talk over with the boys' head coach about adding girls wrestling. I had talks with the head coach, the boys' head coach. He didn't see a reason to add girls wrestling as a sport because he didn't see the numbers there. He's a non-teacher coach, so he's not in the halls, he's not able to recruit, not able to do anything like that. And the meeting was great. They were very open to it, and then they got back to me a couple weeks ago and the A.D. just said, "Hey, the boys' coach doesn't see the numbers. That's where we're gonna take it." She said, "You have the opportunity to go to any school district you want and ask them if they, if it's possible, if they have, are starting a girls' team, and to approach them on doing a co-op." So, on behalf of the A.D., she said to approach any school willing to co-op. Right now Roch- Wittenburg has one girl in their high school program, and they have one other girl, my daughter, in the eighth grade, ready to move up to the high school program. Right now, girls' program is seen as an extension of the boys' program, and I talked with that freshman girl earlier this week. I asked her, "How many girls' tournaments, like, have you done, like, where it's a girls' tournament?" Because I haven't done any. The only girls' tournament that I have done is any time there's a girls' tournament added on to like a JV boys' tournament or something like that. Or if they go to a, a tournament and they can bond like four girls, then they'll put a bracket together and those four girls can wrestle. And she's had under, I think, ten matches, and she qualified, and she's going to bond well this weekend for sectionals to qualify for state. All girls have qualified for state now, and state wrestling is wrestled, girls' state is wrestled right alongside boys' wrestling down in Madison. So, if you guys do add a girls' wrestling program, I would be open to adding Wittenburg- Burnwood as a co-op school. We have, I was told at Wittenburg, we have three or four students that co-op with other schools for all their various, I think, downhill singles one, hockey, because Wittenburg doesn't have hockey, so they go to like, girls go to like Central Wisconsin Storm, which is just a collaboration of many schools, and then I think the boys go to like Antigone or something like that. So, yeah, adding, wanting to do that, women's wrestling is the fastest-growing sport there is. There was never any, like, let's, let's see the level of interest in it for the girls for Wittenburg. It was just, they talked to the boys' coach, the boys' coach said no reason, and that's kinda how, how it went too. If I was in their position, I would have sent out a email to every girl in that school from the age of sixth grade to eleventh grade, say, "Hey, we're thinking about adding girls' wrestling as a program. What is your level of interest? Zero percent, point five, fifty, seventy-five, hundred percent." So, I know you would get two girls, at least at a minimum, from, from Wittenburg, if not more. I've heard rumblings that there's multiple girls that might join. They don't want to join if they have to wrestle boys. It's one, it's simple. Once, I'm a, I was never a big thing into that until my daughter hit puberty. She always wrestled boys. She actually never really cared for wrestling girls. She didn't wanna hurt them. She loved making the boys cry. But when puberty hits, muscle is a totally different thing. So, her high school coach wanted to wrestle one eighty-two in her varsity next year, and I said, "It's not happening. It's just, it's just, that's just another, it's just too much danger for her." And as, she's a nationally-ranked wrestler in the high school girls' division as an eighth grader in the nation, and I just can't put her through that kind of possibility of getting injured. Injury is happened, but if we can do something about it. So, the other issue I wanted to talk to you about is the football program. I've been a part of Rochelle youth football for, I think, six years. I've been coaching third and fourth grade level, and this year, fifth and sixth grade level. We've had tremendous success on their youth levels and whatnot, and I've been able to see our high school over that span, practice and whatnot. While I'm not in the practices, you can see things from afar and whatnot. And I ran some numbers, and I just wanna, I'm just running the numbers, and these are the numbers. Last year, Rochelle football gave up four hundred and sixty-two points total. They scored thirty-two points total in the entire year. Of those four hundred and sixty-two points, three hundred and eighty-two of those points, I believe, were done in the first half. They was up in the first half. I think almost half of all the touchdowns that were scored by Rochelle were done on Hail Mary plays. Throw the ball up, hopefully somebody catches it. It was one of those things. As a coach, when I see a team that is struggling like that in the first half, usually you see it sometimes in the second half. You know, we put up a great, great effort in the first half, and we just don't have the dogs to compete over four cars. We can handle half, but when you see those half numbers, the opposite way, the first, first, you know, half, they're giving up so many points. I believe it's a problem with, they can't execute a play.
Well, I, I don't mean to stop you there.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that feedback.
Yeah.
Because that, that is part of, that's, that's, I think, for our closed session.
Okay.
Before the program, so really, as far as that, I can't even discuss that anymore.
Okay, yeah.
So, but thank you for your input on that, and the one, and your input on the girls' wrestling, I know Luke's gonna talk about that more, so, so, thank you for coming and thank you for sharing.
Hey, thank you, Derek, for having me.
I didn't mean to cut you off, right?
Yep.
And I just have, I just have one question. I don't know if the board has any questions?
Did you put out feelers here in Rochelle?
So, from me and, so Luke came to me about a month and a half, two months ago. He goes, he heard about what I was trying to do in Wittenburg, start a girls' wrestling team. And he's like, "Hey, you know way more, you're way more involved in girls' wrestling than I am." Who do you know? I go, "I know a guy, Jake Lozniak. He's the head women's coach at UWSP. UWSP is the only public institution, university in the Midwest that offers women's wrestling." So, great guy. I think he has about twenty, twenty-some girls on his roster, four, and it's a lot num- it's a big number, but in order to have a successful team in college, you need thirty-plus. You need three at each weight, because somebody's probably gonna be hurt, so you need good practice partners, things like that. So, I set him up, him, Luke and Jake up with the message to say, "Hey, Jake, this is Luke. He's a wrestling coach at Rochelle. He's interested in doing that." Once I heard Jake's reply, I just exited out of the conversation and haven't heard anything more about it.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
My mind's saying.
Talking with Luke, and I might be paraphrasing what Luke says. We have one eighth grade girl at Rochelle that does, that does middle school. We don't have any, I don't believe we don't have any high school girls. But I believe that there's multiple willing to come out, as long as they don't have to deal with boys doing tournaments against them. Practice can be sometimes different. You can need practice partners, but when it comes to tournaments, you have to wrestle. When you wrestle, or you forfeit the match, and things like that. There is possibility for more girls, more Wittenburg girls to come over if you guys do adopt it. It could be as low as two and as high as five or six. It's just, they don't have, they've never been given the opportunity. So, giving them the opportunity, and how Rochelle does a co-op, any co-ops for other schools, that individual athlete is responsible for the cost. So, you guys say, "Hey, if you adopt it, let Wittenburg Burnwood be a part of the co-op." It's gonna cost five hundred dollars for these girls to wrestle for Rochelle and that's their, for Wittenburg, your parents have to bid. I have no problem paying for my daughter to have opportunities wrestling girls. I think, I think girls should just be, just like the boys. They should get twenty-five to, if they get deep in the state, they're wrestling fifty times in a year, things like that.
I, I do have a question. So, the board's gonna, later on, we'll hear from Luke and each other, but they're gonna have to have, first of all, decide on, you know, whether or not it makes sense to make a program. I've been a wrestling official for twenty-three years, so I've seen the, the girls, and you're right, huge youth numbers, even, you know, ten years ago. Get to middle school, there's a little bit, few have gone on to wrestle high school because of the whole boy thing and puberty and, and muscle mass and whatever else. So they, the board's gonna have to decide, first of all, is a program practical here? Does it make sense, should we have, should we offer girls wrestling? The second would be the organization of that, because you could do a co-op, or you could not do a co-op, which then you would say, "Okay, we, we would just focus on Rochelle girls. Were those people willing to open a role into Rochelle?" And I guess, my question is, if the board decides to go that way, how many of those same two to five would be interested in, in moving, or would they only do that in a co-op?
I can't speak for those girls. I can only speak for what my daughter said, and even though as much as I want her to go to this school, because we do a lot of stuff in this community, she does not wanna go to school in Rochelle. It's just one of those, one of those things. She does not wanna go to the school. Her best friend in the world goes to the school, but it's just one of those things where she's very comfortable. She's been in Wittenburg, and her group of friends there is just not like one person here. It's ten to twelve girls, and it's a great thing there.
No, and I appreciate the honesty, because, I mean, that, that impacts, right? So, I mean, when we think of, of Rochelle girls and numbers, and what if we do, if we just say, "Okay, we're gonna offer a program. If people wanna come here, they gotta come to school here." Okay, well, that may exclude anybody from Wittenburg Burnwood. If we do a co-op, we could get potentially two to three initially, maybe two to five, and that's, you know, with, with girls' weight classes, that's almost half the team right there.
Yeah, there's twelve girls' weight classes. They're thinking about going to thirteen for the boys next year and thirteen for the girls. If, if, if it was my choice, I would try the co-opted, see what you can build. I, I have a feeling, even if you open enough to, you know, surrounding areas, even Spash. Spash, just say, "Hey, we, we're giving the girls this opportunity. See how it goes, and grow, grow women's wrestling in Rochelle, and then when you get the numbers to support a full team, then I would be like, 'Hey, we have enough to support a full team of just Rochelle girls, and we're gonna, we're gonna step away from co-ops and go to co-op.'" I would give it a, I would give it a try for a year or two and see how things are and what numbers are and whatnot. I asked, I asked Wittenburg if they, how many numbers would it take for the girls to have a team, and they said, "You need to fill, be able to fill all the weight classes." Well, they don't have filled the weight classes on the boys' side, and the boys have been wrestling. They're a nat-, they're a state-ranked team. They lost in sectionals last night, so, so it's just one of those, I think I was just up against it type thing, so, yeah. Any other questions or anything like that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay. Alright, that was the only two people we had there. Okay, so we can move on to communications. District administrative report, Dennis.
Well, I have to apologize upfront because even though I know there's only three of ten items, I figured what, what, what better meeting than to try to present some information? So, I, I will do that in just a little bit. But I want to start off with the CWEC donation, and Mary has a report on this too, but just wanna let everybody know that we did receive a thousand dollars from the South Wisconsin Electric Cooperative. That is for our learning buddies program. Do you wanna cover that in your report?
Sure. Well, I can talk about it now, and then I'll skip it in nine.
Okay.
So, Kimber Havick applied. It's, the thousand dollars is going to be used for the second and sixth grade reading buddies. They are gonna go to the SWEZ, the C-E-W-E-S. They've picked a couple different outdoor programs. They're gonna go on March eighth because Mrs. Boinski is really, she, she and Ms. Havick are the ones who kinda planned this together, and they definitely want to go before Ms. Boinski will be out. So, all second graders and sixth graders will be going to SWEZ on March eighth for different science-based activities out there with this number, or this money that they got from Operation Roundup.
Alright, any questions? And it's under the dollar limit, so there's no, we'll send a thank you and, and do all that as well. Community conversation, just an update there. We're up to a little over twenty people that have responded to Trisha as far as involvement. Reminded board members, if you plan on attending, if you could just let Trisha know that as well. I just included with, I sent to the board the public invitation letter. I did send out a video to our high school students and to our parents, informing them of what this was. Just trying to do that, that personal invite via video, and I attached the flyer just for everybody's review. Going down to the state convention, it was interesting because in that state convention, there was multiple presentations about what we, what we consider the fiscal cliff. And so, just, you might have heard that, that term, and I just wanted to talk about that a little bit, because that's like the big thing in the budget. Every year, we, every two years, we have a biennial that comes up, and the governor is gonna propose a budget to the legislators, and legislators are gonna say, "That's not gonna work," and there's compromises, arguments, and there's things that are cut out of it and everything else. And it's political posturing a bit, because fifteen, twenty years ago, education was not even a mention i- in that budget other than a line item. Now it's become one of the main focal points of education. So, I just wanna share a couple slides from this. The fiscal cliff and what that, what it meant by that, and basically, it's a combination of things. So, it's financial impacts for the biennial budget, it's demographics, declining enrollment, it's a combination of a multiple, multiple things. But this is just a couple things to keep in mind when we think about funding in schools. In twenty-twenty-two, or twenty-oh-two, Wisconsin ranked number eleven as far as per people's spending in the nation. As of twenty-twenty, we were down to twenty-fifth, so we're right at that middle of the road, which it, it is what it is. We've gone from being one of the higher funded, or in the, at least in the upper third to middle of the road. When it comes to the national average, we used to be in two thousand and two, eleven percent, this is in dollars, now eleven percent above the national average, and now we're, schools, public schools are funded, you know, five point six percent below the national average. So even though we're at number twenty-five, we're not even funded at the national average when it comes to state funding. So that, that's a concern. That's just happened over time. This, this slide really hit home for me, because revenue limits came into effect in, I wanna say nineteen ninety-eight, and they were supposed to be in effect for like five years. It was just a, a quick fix to fix the budget back in those days. Revenue limits are still here. But what's even more important than that is in two thousand and eight, revenue limits stopped keeping up with the cost of living. So, the blue line represents inflation, the red line represents the, the state aid and the formulas that the legislators have used. So, as in twenty-two, twenty-three, if they would've kept up with state funding, it would've been about thirty-one hundred dollars per people more than what we're currently receiving, and to us, that would be one point five million dollars. That's a referendum. So basically, in two thousand and eight, the lawmakers of that time said, "We're gonna stop funding with the cost of inflation. If you need more money, go ask your taxpayers." Well, guess what? There's not a whole lot, there's not too many schools in the state of Wisconsin that haven't gone to their taxpayers in the recent, you know, in the last decade to ask for more money to run their schools. So, I think it's, I think that's important to know, because that's not a referendum, or maybe you still go to referendum, but this is definitely some of those deferred maintenance things. When we talk rooftops and boilers that are from the nineteen eighties and nineties, you know, they're going on twenty-five years. They're, they're getting to the point where they need to be replaced, so how do we get that money? So, that's the first thing I wanted to, to discuss. Secondly, this came out today, and there was confusion about S R funding, because there was a report, and some politicians grasped onto this report that said, "Schools aren't even spending their S R money. Why should we have bigger funding for schools? Because we're not even spending that money that they got from the federal government." Well, that's because we all have a plan for how to use those funds, and we don't have to spend them until the December twenty twenty-four, so we're spreading it out, right? We're not gonna spend everything right away. So, we're spreading it out, right? We're not gonna spend everything right away upfront. And what happens is that, um, the last biennial had zero percent increases in both years for per people spending. So, basically, the legislators, again, in the state of Wisconsin, said, we're not gonna give you any new money, use your ESER money, because one of the clauses in the ESER funds, ESER three funds, said, you can spend it on PPE, you can spend it on all this other stuff. And then the last one said to maintain your current staff. Every district administrator that I know has used ESER three as maintaining their staff, because we've had no increase in the last two years in per people spending. So, um, this was the DPI's attempt coming out today, that it kind of, it tries to explain a little bit. So, it talks about how the districts have the plan in place. It's a difficult, difficult time to plan, because we have inflation and, and, um, ESER three was, has been a challenge. Um, there's been things where Wisconsin had to resubmit their state level plan, so we didn't get the money in a timely fashion that we initially thought. Um, new spending money is critical, because we've been underfunded, even with that CPI or that, uh, cost of living increase. And so I thought it was interesting that the DPI put this out today to try to, um, refute some of those claims that, why do we need to spend money on schools when they have all this ESER money? Because that ESER money is one-time money, and our leg, our current legislators have used that as saying, hey, schools, you got all this money from the government, we don't have to fund you, just use that money. That's great, until that money's not here, and then what do we do? That's the cliff we're talking about. Um, I, again, ironically, the, the governor's budget comes out today, and this was an article that I just wanted to share. It's from the CAP Times, it's from Madison. Regardless of your political affiliation, this is just what Governor Evers is proposing for schools, and it's two point six billion dollar increase to K-12 schools. Will that, will that happen? Absolutely not. Because like I said, there's posturing and arguments and debates and compromises that are going to exist. But this is, I, I thought this was a pretty decent article to talk about, um, why it's important to spend money on schools, especially when there's projected seven point one, if not more, billion-dollar surplus. Um, talks about revenue limit increases, so increasing, you know, instead of having a zero percent increase, raising it, and I believe it's three fifty and six fifty, um, per student, and a per people aid, yep, right there it is, three fifty and six fifty. So, in the next two years, we would have a thousand dollars per student. That's five hundred thousand dollars for our school. You know, that's, that's significant, right? Um, we can get some things done i- if, if that truly happens. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to point that out to the board, so, um, if you had, I just put it on there today, because it just came out today. Uh, but if you review that and have any questions about school funding, I thought that was the big message that I got from our con, our conference or convention down in Milwaukee, was that, you know, everybody's aware of this fiscal cliff, something has to be done, because we can't just simply not fund public schools, say, use federal money, and then when that all dries up, say, oh, we're gonna fund you at the same rate. And so, you know, politicians know this, the governor knows this, all school boards know this. It's just a matter of how that's going to come about, when and where, and, and, you know, the political gamesmanship, if you will, that's gonna have to take place, and we'll see what the biennial, uh, comes to. Now, I do know that, um, Carla and I did go to the Wasbowl Legislative Meeting last Friday, and there was three representatives, there was, um, Jesse James, there was, um, who's the guy from Wasbowl, the ex-radio guy?
Pat Snyder?
Pat Snyder, thank you. And then there was another person that I didn't know. But they all said that. He did, he had it out, like, everybody gave it to him. But it was kind of interesting to hear them talk, because, um, one of the things that I don't have the dollar amount that we receive, but one of the things is common school funds, and there was some questions about how to spend that. Basically, that's money that's given to, um, like, the library media centers to increase technology and buy books and those, do those types of things. And some of the other business officials were sitting there and saying, you know what? It's great money, don't get us wrong, but we have to, we struggle to find ways to spend it, because there's so many restrictions on that money. We can buy a STEM Lego kit that students use to build things and build like robots, whatnot, and, and explore science and technology, but we can't buy a bin to put the Legos in with that money. And the legislature is like, what? They're like, yeah, that's how it comes about. They're like, that doesn't make any sense. We're like, you're right, it doesn't make any sense. We can buy new website development, new computers, new laptops, you know, Chromebooks, but we can't buy a cubicle to sit at, so they can, you know, have a desk to sit at. And they're like, well, that doesn't make any sense. We know. Um, so it was an interesting conversation to try to educate. I, I thought they were receptive to that.
Yeah, they were very receptive.
Whether they take that back and share it, who knows? But, um, some of those restrictions on some of those grants and some of those, some of that money is a little bit, a little bit creepy, so. Um, just thought I'd update you on, on, on some of those things. Um, moving forward, um, DPI ESER, CAP Times got that legislative meeting, yep. I thought this was also was interesting, this was a takeaway on, on superintenities in the state of Wisconsin. This, this is some statistics as of January, there's a hundred and six district leadership changes statewide, which is, I mean, that's above a fourth. So, there's a fourth of the districts that have a new superintendent. Sixty of those are first-year superintendents. So, the experience is going away, you're getting greener and younger people, maybe not younger people, less experienced people in those positions, um, which it seems to be kind of a, that, that's a concern. Um, experiences on the decline, infill appointments continue to be of interest. Um, and they talked about board challenges when it comes to those. Another thing that I thought was interesting is that, as of January, there were still ten interim superintendents out there. That means those districts are still looking for, um, for superintendents, for. So, that's just an, an interesting dynamic within, um, within schools and school leadership. I thought the other thing that was a good conversation with the legislators, we talked about hiring aduitors. So, when people retire and they're, you know, drawing their, their pension from the state, hiring them back in either a part-time role or a full-time role, because what does it matter? We double, most educators are going to double dip after retirement anyway, but they usually do it by going to work at Menards, or QuickTrip, or Walmart, or something like that. They're still working, they're drawing their pension, they're working somewhere else, and what we're doing is we're wasting that twenty-five, thirty years of experience, why don't we just hire them back into school when we can't find teachers anymore? And so I think there was some, they said there was some movement there, they were, they were aware of that, um, which I think is a good thing, because, I mean, there's certain subs that we have here, and, and other districts relate this too. We have subs that sub until early April, but then they can't, because they've met their maximum days that they can work. And then in the spring, when there's more field trips and people take more days off, uh, because the weather gets nice, we don't have the subs that we need in the district. So, well, is there something we could do about that restriction? And I think they were receptive to that. So, um, that's just a couple of updates that I wanted to share. I also wanted to inform you about the Lunchtime Launchers. That's, uh, the new program that we approved last month, last month, December, I think it was last month. I think so. Um, there, this is a, a week or so, uh, old at this time, but we have eight launchers that have helped fifty-two families to tune the vaults, twenty-three hundred dollars has been donated. So, that's amazing. I think that's awesome, because, um, again, the families that are in need, that are, are struggling, are, are at least getting a little bit of assistance, so. Um, the last two things that I have, and the, uh, item ten does need approval, and I don't, I'm gonna turn to Luke to see if you have anything to say about the wrestling mat, because basically, and I'll paraphrase, and I knew you had a hundred, you wanted to, or if you can. Um, we have three mats that we use right now for competitions. There's one that's pretty new. Um, there's one that is fairly new, but that's starting to peel and the, the letters are coming off. And then we have the super old one, that is just a bit better than wrestling on the hardwood floor, because it's been squished down for years, and it's one of those that used to be in the eighties. Instead of coming in the, you know, the nice foam, which is about four, five inches thick or whatever, this is that one inch thick kind of old, hard, it was hard in the eighties, and it's still hard. Um, except this one's squished down, so it's even harder than it was in the eighties. So, it's my understanding the Booster Club is, is starting to, um, accept donations and fundraise for a new school mat. That mat's about fourteen thousand dollars, which is above the level of my acceptance and Aaron's acceptance, which means that the board would have to officially accept that donation. But I also understand that the Booster Club has some interest in donors, but they want it specifically to go for this, uh, this project. And if the board's not willing to accept that, they're not working on donating to it, so that is harder to fundraise for that. So, I don't know if there, if, we don't have the mat to donate, or I should say, we, the Booster Club doesn't have the mat to donate yet.
Correct.
But if the, if the board would be willing to accept that at a later time, that would help Booster Club, Booster Club fundraise for that mat. So, I guess that's the question that's presented to the board this time. Anything else you'd like to add for the wrestling mat?
Yeah, I've, I've been involved with our youth program now for three years, and over that three years, we're starting to get a lot of families that are kind of coming in and really starting to establish like a new wrestling family. We're building a culture. So, we've got a large amount of wrestlers who will be coming up through, you know, middle school in the next few years and eventually high school. Uh, but with our parents, you know, similar to our Stingers, they're looking to be more involved, and they're starting to ask like, well, what can we do to help our kids have a, you know, have the best experience possible through youth, middle school, high school, right? And so, as we're hosting these middle school meets that have big-time wrestling programs from like Cocona and Wrightstown and Wittenberg and, you know, all these communities, they come in and they see that they're gonna wrestle on this mat from the nineteen seventies. They're just like, what is Rochelle, you know? So, with the support and the culture we're starting to build at the youth group, we want to fundraise so that we get that mat, you know, officially retired. It's the old heavy foam mat, it takes three people to, to freaking move the thing. You're like, you're at risk of throwing your back out, like wrestling with it, right? The new mats are like a really lightweight foam, they're like, uh, separated underneath, so it's like super, like one person can roll up a section of mat. Like, one person could literally settle a whole mat within ten minutes. Like, you can't do that with this mat from nineteen seventies, like, you'd kill yourself. And trust me, I've tried. Uh, I, so, the idea here is that we're, we're, we're laying a foundation for these kids to really be, that gives them something to be proud of, including the parents. We have, if you get into the wrestling fans in the community, they know that Rochelle used to run a youth wrestling program, right? So, they want to see Rochelle return to hosting an annual youth tournament, but we need, you know, we need the resources to do it. And having this mat from the nineteen seventies that we're wrestling with is, is just something that's gotta go, uh, so that it really puts us in a position and be aligned to run a youth tournament. That's my little spiel on our mat.
So, I guess, um, open to discussion or questions, but we'll be looking for a motion to approve that donation at a later date.
Are we approving?
Well, they're not gonna, no.
We approve them basically to be.
To the fundraiser.
Right.
I'll make the motion, you need a motion, absolutely.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the board for a motion to approve it. Uh, we wouldn't get the mat tonight, I just don't say the mat's not gonna donate, but the idea and the concept, to approve that.
So, basically, we're making a motion to approve the fundraiser with the, the donation in future.
Correct.
Definitely, yeah.
James, who has it?
I'll second.
Okay, you have second, right? James first, then? Is there any more discussion? Anybody else have any more questions about it?
We should not do that.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, any objections? Um, okay, motion was carried, so Luke, go for it.
I have one comment, probably. Do you know that we're trying to rebrand the hornet?
I am, so, so we actually, I like it.
So, we don't like it.
Correct. So, we have actually two wrestling projects that are, like, ongoing, that we're starting to fundraise for, and, but, we're, we're gonna hold off any purchase until that logo is finalized, because we want this to be kind of like a launching pad for our wrestling team under the new logo.
So, will the, this mat will be used like in the high school then too, and?
Correct, it'll become our primary, uh, primary competition mat. So, the mat will actually have the, it'll be a large logo over the whole, like, the big circle, and then on the sides, it'll say, I think, Rochelle Hornets or Rochelle Wrestling, and, um, it'll have Velcro seams, so that we're not, you know, the wrestling tape is not cheap, right? And if we take care of this mat, like, we're using it for a very long time, and we're not having to buy cases of tape, you know, every year, uh, to piece it together in a wrestling room or in a gym for competitions.
Now, we, you won't use, you won't use that mat during practice time, though, right?
Correct, it'll be saved specifically for competitions, high school, middle school, and then.
It'll last you long.
Right. And then the last thing I have is that, um, the May meeting, and I'm gonna call it the, um, May seventeenth, uh, is our scheduled board meeting, but I have been informed that our president, current president, may not be present then, who knows? Uh, because we'll do reorganization probably at the May meeting. Um, Carla's not gonna be here. And so, my question is, and I, when we took a look at moving it a week later to the twenty-fourth, that's actually the thirtieth day post the fourth Monday in April, or, yeah, April. So, we have to do our reorganization of the board within thirty days. So, that's right on the cusp of, there's bad weather, electricity that goes out, we'd be in violation of reorganization rules. So, my question would be, in May, because of that conflict, could we move to the tenth? And I know Lee, you have second Wednesday conflict.
Farm Bureau.
Is that the tenth?
Can we change it to, say, what is it, seventeenth, like the fifteenth, like a Monday?
Just last year, we changed it earlier.
Also, the, on that Wednesday too, is a band concert, so it's just not.
Correct, you're correct, I'm sorry.
But.
Yeah, January, January, we moved to Monday the sixteenth.
And we could go Monday the fifteenth, there is a, um, boys and girls middle school track at home.
I leave on that.
So, I don't know how many people that would impact, I'm not sure.
What, what is this?
Middle school.
Um, Monday the fifteenth, there's a middle school track, and softball's at home, and baseball's at home.
What is that, the back beach shops, is that?
Yeah.
What else is later on?
How about on the fourteenth, Mother's Day?
Um, so if we go to that week prior, Wednesday's pretty open. Um, and, and, and again, Wednesday the tenth, that, that would, that would impact Rachel's ability to get financials ready, just because it's sold quickly after the turn of the month. Um, so I don't know that I would go any earlier than that, but, and again, we have a boatload of things, um, scheduled on the eleventh.
How about the eighteenth?
The eighteenth would be, I mean, Carla is gonna be gone, it should be gone from the seventeenth through the next weekend.
Well, you can do it without me, I mean, I'm going to graduation in Florida.
You gotta finally graduate, huh?
It's only a couple hours, isn't it?
You can really help if you want.
But, so.
Catch that eye, get back here.
Depending when and where you are, I mean, could that, that could be a, you could join.
I could miss the Farm Bureau meeting.
Are you sure?
Don't wanna force that.
I don't wanna force you.
Just looking for, just, just identifying a conflict, we don't have to decide right now.
I missed it before we changed, I missed it before we changed the date, so.
Can we see the week before?
Um, yeah, so, it's pretty full, except for Friday, we got a Friday the twelfth.
What about that following Monday? Like, the twenty-first or something?
Twenty-second.
Track regional.
Twenty-third?
Do we host the track regionals?
We do.
We're hosting track.
How about twenty-third? Doesn't look like anything's on your calendar.
Um, but that would be softball.
Baseball, regionals, softball, regionals.
And, and is that baseball, or?
Baseball's in there.
So, that's softball.
So, we would have softball, softball.
How about the twenty-sixth?
We can't go there.
That's, it is graduating.
We'll be here for graduation.
A quick meeting.
Twenty-minute meeting, but that's after the thirty days from the fourth Monday of April.
Twenty-third is softball, we have four thirty, so it'll be done by six.
So, we could potentially do a twenty-third, maybe move the meeting back to six-thirty, so people go to.
We can do it on the tenth. I'm, we have, move our meeting to May tenth at six o'clock.
Are you sure? Are you sure? I don't want the Farm, I don't want Farm Bureau to go after us.
Is Rachel capable of getting anybody ready for the tenth?
It makes it tough on Rachel.
It does make it tough on her, that she's not here yet.
She can suck it up one Wednesday.
What?
She always did it before, right?
Yeah.
It, it may not be as complete, because it.
It is what it is, we got a compromise sometime, so, okay.
That's good for not being here today.
Okay, so motion first and second. Okay, all those in favor to move the meeting to May tenth?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, perfect. Thank you, guys, just, I, I looked at the calendar, and the band concert was that same day, on the seventeenth, so, I wanted to clear out, and then we just happened to be leaving.
And that's all I have, so to any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Dennis? I do wanna just, um, go off of Dennis. I did go to the state convention, and it was very, thank you for letting me go, it was very interesting. Different things, met a lot of, a lot of networking, met a lot of different school board members, presidents, um, so, and when I listen to their problems, we're so minor, we are so minor. And, and just even that combination of the networking, or even how their boards mesh together, we, they don't, they're not even close to how we mesh together, and we can compromise, and we can talk to each other, and respect each other, and still come up with a decision. And that was what I found, you know, just sitting there and listening to other people talk. So, it was, I appreciate you letting me go.
I should also mention that Tricia also.
Oh, yeah, Tricia helped me. Dennis tried to kill me, but that's okay, we'll, we'll let that one go.
That's easy. All right.
It was just in the special ed van, that's all, it's cafeteria.
So, all right, now we got, so, we were in, we had the special ed van, right?
Students with disabilities from the other six schools. Again, this is one where we supply the bus, um, for any of our students that want to. Again, this is one where we supply the bus, um, for any of our students that want to go and participate in this track and field day.
And I will add to that, that our, uh, the last special consortium meeting that was, uh, Tuesday, that's great. Um, there was a major discussion about snow coats, so, I guess, throw that out there. Major discussion about whether it should be snow coat or not, cause it was messy last night. Had to snow coat.
So, I don't know if you want to, um, put these together in one big motion, or if you would like to have individual motions on these three, but they are all over fifty miles.
So they're all going to the Dells on the eleventh, and then?
No, one is the eleventh.
Yeah?
May eleventh, the next one is May twelfth. That's the top ten, so it's all the schools in Portage County, that they're top ten safety cadets.
Okay.
So do those kids, are those kids going on the eleventh too?
Yes, so, some kids might be going two days in a row.
Correct.
That's, that's what I was saying.
Yep, and then April twentieth is, is, like, Edgar.
I move that we send these kids to these events, all three of them.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed? Okay, motion was carried, we are all going, Mary.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Anything else, Mary, or is that what you said?
Nope, unless you guys have any questions for me.
Okay, Gary?
Okay, I, I just wanna talk about my winter sports updates, um, we're getting to the end of these seasons, uh, so girls basketball received the eight seed, uh, at their, um, CD meeting. And they get a home game against Pacheli on Tuesday, next Tuesday. Um, Zalewski Sports will be there broadcasting, so, um, that's awesome, we have them coming. Uh, it's gonna be a good game, Pacheli and Rochelle's always a good tough game, so everyone show up, they'll be cheering on, it'll be great. Uh, boys basketball, there's two weeks left in the regular season, until the playoffs begin, they will be, be seeded on Sunday. Um, uh, you know, the record doesn't indicate that, how, how much the boys like basketball. This last Tuesday, there was a middle school wrestling meet, and it was a voluntary practice at eight o'clock, and there were seventeen of the kids there. So, they're enjoying basketball, the record doesn't, you know, doesn't indicate their enjoyment of this sport right now, so, um, I'm, I'm proud of them for sticking through it and still enjoying it. Um, and then wrestling, we, at, uh, regionals, we had one student play second, um, Luke told me that his son beat a kid that was ranked seventh to get there. So, awesome for, uh, Magnus to make it to sectionals this next, this Saturday, it seemed like, it was awesome, so, that's my update.
What, where is he, he?
Two-twenty.
Two-twenty.
Any questions?
I have a question for you, Aaron.
Sure.
In my calendar, is there parent-teacher conferences on the twenty-first?
There is.
And a basketball.
There is. We have a basketball game tomorrow as well, with parent-teacher conferences.
Okay, I just, I was just double checking my calendar.
We're doing our, we're doing, doing the classrooms.
Classrooms, yeah, we're using our, our.
Yeah, we're leaving the commons, we did the commons in the early ones, we're doing classrooms this one, no biggie for us.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, teachers are okay with that?
Yep, we did the commons last, or, I mean, we did classrooms all last year.
Oh, okay, alright. Ellie, anybody else have any kind of questions for Erin? Okay, let's move on to old business. Um, Rochelle, for an option's logo.
So, this is just an update, there's not necessarily a motion that needs to be made, because, um, I took with the board, uh, and again, to remind the board and, and those, uh, in, in, in attendance tonight, taking a look at our current official logo, is the same one that appears over there on the paper towel dispenser. It's very two-D, I could, I can see that on a popsicle stick, either facing right or facing left. The one that's on the soap dispenser, which is a re-fabrication of the logo, and I believe that was made by Maida, that has a little bit more depth, meaning that you can see where there could be like a three-D, where that could be turned facing you, it could be turned in different potential positions, um, you know, could put a basketball in the hands, whatever. And that was an attempt to, to rebrand or to update. Um, there's a third one that's appears on our sports, um, our sports calendars, and that one's more like the Charlotte Hornet, and kind of a cartoony type of thing, and so, um, when we go forward as we get a wrestling mat, or as we put a logo, um, do like a mural on the inside of the commons, and if we would put something on our exterior windows that would say Hornet Pride, and you have a Hornet logo, those should all be together, they should all be the same logo and branding the school, so that when people see it, they're like, oh, that's the Rochelle Hornet, that's, that's Rochelle. Instead of having multiple logos. And so, taking what, uh, I presented the board with a number of different examples, if you will, last year, and, or last month, and basically, the, uh, what, what I took away was, let's take a look at, um, updating our current logo. Go to a graphic artist or somebody that would be in this environment or in this world, and see if they could update the logo. Well, Nick Akwick is in that environment, he is, um, he, I, I asked Ms. Akwick if she would reach out to him and see if he'd be interested in trying to take this on, and yes, okay, great. So, this is his first rendition, I sent out, um, to our staff and I believe the board, the survey. Um, if I didn't send it out to you yet, I'll get that to you, because there's a survey of questions, kind of what we like and don't like. Um, we did preview it at the, at the motion club meeting recently, just to get some initial reaction to it. Um, but this is his rendition of the current logo, and kind of bringing it into today's terms, if you will. Um, I do understand that he's actually researched, like, what a real hornet, like, in the, in the hive looks like. And so that's why some of the eyes are a little bit different and, and those types of things. And then I also then asked if, um, if you would do kind of a, a, a high school one, and then, not that we have to, but what do you consider an elementary one? That's a little bit friendlier, it has a smile, it's not like the killer hornet. Um, I know that Mary's, they talked with Mary, she's like, why do we need two? If we're gonna brand, let's focus on one logo.
You were saying make it all badge, make it all badge, now you're going this road.
And mostly because.
I mean, it's huge, but, our purpose is to get to one.
I agree.
And, and most, the reason that I asked that initially was because, um, in a former school, we had a K-four building, and we were the phoenix, and so we had a baby phoenix for the four K, fourth grade building. And then, the intermediate school, we had the full-fledged, you know, full-blown phoenix. So, um, the, I just wanted to show that, because it's an option. So, the survey basically says, you know, what do you like about the head, what do you like about the midsection, what do you like about the stinger, and what do you like about the arms and legs, on both of those different things, so I'll get that to the board. But, we're just asking for feedback, um, so that way we can give that feedback to Nick, and he can make some adjustments, because, um, I, he does three-D modeling, and so what he can develop is, if you think of a figurine or a Barbie doll or whatever, that would be, you know, standing, or you, you could put it on a, on a, on a stand, and then you could turn that multiple ways, um, that's what I'm looking for from the logo. If we can come to a consensus of what the logo should look like, before he builds it, it's, it's very labor-intensive to build a three-D model. So if we can make as many of those corrections before we get that, the better it is, and it's less hours for him to adjust and things of that nature. So, um, I think of different, and I think I, I've said this before, but, uh, you know, if we, if we have a hornet logo, and we have the three-D model, we can then kind of move the camera angle, if you will, kind of looking down at the hornet, and put a basketball in the hornet's hand, like they're shooting a free throw. And we can have it from that above image. If we decide to, um, do King Kong as, as, as a play, we can move the camera angle down, and the hornet's really like this big monstrous thing gonna tear up the town. And you just, it's more flexible, and that way you can have a logo that you can manipulate in unlimited number of ways, instead of a two-D logo that you turn left or turn right. And that's kind of, kind of where the, uh, where we're hoping it'll go. So, I just wanted to update the board, any comments or suggestions on this? I will get the survey, the questionnaire out, so you can provide individual comment, and then, um, once I get, collect a lot of those, um, and, you know, I'll send out another email saying, hey, get all your, get your survey done by next Friday or something, and then I'll give that to Nick, and then he can try to incorporate those adjustments or changes. Any questions or?
My one thought is, which ends this stinger on? If you look at that picture right there, it looks like he's got, he needs to shave off the, the nose a little bit.
Oh, his nose and his tail, is what you mean.
The stinger should be on his tail, but to me, it looks like, and even looking at these old logos, a lot of these people, that they have the nose rounded off, but for, kind of like ours, you got a big sharp thing in the front, like Woody Woodpecker, and.
But Luke got, got one of your shirts that I really liked, has got a pointy one too, and I think you said Nick did some research on this, right? Of what they look like, so that's kind of what they look like in the hive.
I don't know. I think they're more rounded.
And what it could do, is, cause I think that was our, that one was also there, I could say, could you, could you render that one?
Yeah, I mean, I.
Sorry to your.
I'm gonna destroy, I, I think people are gonna like that one.
Yeah. I'm here for multiple reasons.
Yes.
So.
Look at the camera.
So he's, he's done the original logo and tried to update that?
Sure.
Maybe my next request would be if you take that logo and see, how could you render that, or, and then we could take a look at those two side by side.
Have to make the other hand look like a fist.
Yes, I don't, that's what's gonna be my comment, is the left hand.
The left hand needs to look more like a fist, it looks weird, it's like the other one.
Well, there was a comment, what's up with the Mickey Mouse boots? This kind of looks like.
Well, one's a high job, one's a low job. The one that's more near, one's for the. Yes, yeah, like, what was that, be, be married?
But again, this, this is the first draft, right, so looking for feedback, not that it's good or bad, or somewhere in between, just looking for feedback, so that way we can fine tune it.
But if you want to really fine tune that, you're talking about maybe putting a basketball in there, so that you put Adidas tennis shoes or something, I don't know.
Use the logo.
Use the logo.
Just put tennis.
But he's talking about for different stuff, like a volleyball, you, football, basketball, baseball.
Yeah, you could, you could do some, you could put a ball in that thing's hand, pretty easy.
Can we ask some questions, since there's fifteen or twenty people here, what do you guys all think of that?
Well, we thought in our AP Bio class, no one liked it. The top, the best comment was the one up in the left corner, looks nice. No, everyone wants the old one, like in the school.
Sandy, what do you think, which one do you like better?
The left one.
Hi, I'm an old-fashioned girl, so it's hard to think of anything besides what was on my sweatshirt when I was at school.
It's hard, it's, it's just, learning to adjust.
Aaron. And, and maybe that's the feedback we'd give those to be closer.
I guess, my question more about whether I like it or not, is, what are we going to do with it afterwards? Are we just going to be having another logo out there? Or are we going to be retaking off all the logos off the soap dispenser and things, and only having one then?
Correct, that's what it'll be.
So, we are going to be sticking in a lot of money into updating all the logos and all the different things.
On everything, we'll just become a one logo.
Correct.
Again, I'm, I'm an old-fashioned person too, I like the older one, but, um, not to say that we couldn't do some higher ones too.
What do you think, sir? You like the older?
Then why do we have?
How about the older teachers that are in here? Mr. Schutz?
Yes.
Um, I think modernizing is not a bad goal. But it'd be nice to have one, versus thirteen, which we have not. I don't have that in stock.
How about Mr. Dolby, it seems he's been here a while.
Well, the one on the sports calendar is probably my fault from softball, so.
Okay.
I, I, I like, I want, I would prefer a more updated version of the old one. I don't know if this is the one.
Okay.
I would say that, alright. I just, I, I like the three-D idea, of being able to use it differently.
Can we not take the old one and make it three-D?
Well, that's what I can ask, that's the feedback I can give and say, Nick, you know, we, we appreciate the rendering and, and the research you've done, but we really wanna take that old one, almost exactly, and make it into a three-D. Give it, so, so, even with, even with, with this one, you can see that there's depth, cause you can see a shadow, you can see shadow on the inside of leg, you can see that it looks almost like a animated feature, or animated thing, of animated being. When I look at this one on the top, I don't see that, I mean, it tries to do it, but I, I just don't see depth, I don't see three-D possibilities. But maybe that's where we have to go, is say, okay, how do we take this one, the old one, and make it so that it looks more animated?
Well, if you just, if you're able to three-D the old one, you could probably go ahead and change it. And still have to change the soap dispenser back.
But, and so that's one of the things, being new with fresh eyes, I see three or four different logos being used, it's like, okay, why? At some point, somebody didn't like the old one, and said, well, it's updated here, updated there, or this is the one I wanna use for this sports program, this one I wanna use for that, you know, sports team, or, or chess club, or whatever it might be, and then, all of a sudden, there's, there's no identity, there's multiple versions being used. And so, if we're gonna, one of the things that, you know, as you, as you, as you rebrand or you, um, try to brand a school, it should be a consistent logo, is that what you have, this is Rochelle Hornet, this is our logo. So that's just something from my business past and marketing past that I'm trying to clean up, and I know, and Mary warned me, she goes, you know, if you try to look at a logo, it's gonna be a, a, kind of, kind of a storm. It, it always is, right, cause changes are, I mean, we don't change, but if there's a way to be more true to the original logo and three-D that, and, and three-D image that, great, that's fine.
Luke, can I see your logo again?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I'll close, you need a good.
Well, that is closing that one. Now, where did that one come from?
Which one is it?
It's the one that looks like.
So this is a good one, though.
That's, that's from the Stingers, that came from Stingers.
Oh, this is the rest of the one, so it's not, this is not from Stingers, I've been sitting for a while. But it is, it's probably a situation where somebody.
Oh, it's right.
Access from the Honda five ninety-nine.
Oh, the Honda five.
Almost.
The wings are different.
The wings are different.
The wings are different, yeah, right. Oh.
That was something that was available when it was a shirt.
Yeah.
And it was one of.
Correct, yeah, somebody just probably grabbed the logo that they liked and put Rochelle Wrestling, correct.
Nice watch, you're a nice color.
I like it.
So, I, I, I hear two things as far as feedback, I, I hear, let's see if we can stay truer to the original logo, and then I hear, is it possible to have that one also rendered side by side, to take a look at?
But see, he's got that pointed head on that one too.
I think the pointed head makes it a little, little tougher.
Oh.
Is the oldest, is our old logo, is that a stock or is that a jar?
Good question, because, I, I've heard it's been a former student that Andrew.
That's how, it's so old, these look different, yeah.
But when I was, when I was searching online, Harvard High School has something that's very similar, and Levitt High School, which is in Ohio, has something very similar, so, if it was one of our students that drew it, they copied us. Or, our student that evidently created the, our original logo back in the day, whenever that was, cause I don't know, um, went out there and found other imaging and then traced it or came up with it. So, there's other examples of that hornet out there, I just don't know if it was truly our original and people copied it, or if we copied it from other people. There's just other images that are very similar to, to our logo.
Does that look three-D or no?
What's that?
Levitt?
Levitt?
What?
Does that look three-D at all?
More than, more than what I would say ours does, yes.
Cause that's by the.
Should be possible then.
Cause it has, it just has one more color to it, it has one more white compared to just the other.
So, what I'm, I'm seeing here is, we have three different emblems, or, uh, marquees, whatever, but shouldn't that be anytime that we order t-shirts, or anytime that we get a sticker, shouldn't that be going to one bunch of people saying, that's what we need to do? Luke's got that on his shirt, you know, somebody made a basketball and somebody made a baseball one, that's where the problem started.
Yeah, the problem is, when, you know, if you had a wrestling program, or basketball program, or Stingers, whoever, they might've went to Mater, they might've went to Amherst, or they might've went to Webco, and they just use a different.
So before anything gets printed, it should be brought to you guys.
Correct.
The way it should be taken.
What if we just have one logo?
Yes, we've got one logo.
If we just have one logo, then you just send that logo to that company and say, this is our logo, this is what we want. Yes, Mr. Allen?
Yes, is it possible to like, get like a final four, and do a, do a vote in the student body? Does it, not like a few students, the whole four K, four K through twelfth grade vote on the new Stingers logo, ours, Hornet logo, sorry.
We're forgetting about the community though, because they don't.
That's right.
Yeah, the community is probably more.
The community is more apt to, should have a say.
Complain?
Than, just, just the students, you know.
They didn't have input.
It's your alumni, you got some, the loyalty to your alumni.
Yeah, but not everybody that lives in Rochelle is alumni of Rochelle.
No, but I mean, your kids, or grandkids, or whatever, you know.
I don't have any of all of those. Well, I guess my kid that was.
Then you get it, you're out.
That's fine.
Man, he's nasty today.
Um, so those.
It's okay.
As far as feedback, I, I will send the, the feedback form to the board, the board can type in individual comments, um. As far as feedback, I I will send the the feedback form to the board, the board can type in individual comments, um. I've got kind of a consensus that, yes, let's take a look at staying truer to our original logo, um, I'll I'll also include the feedback that I've received from others and and send it off to Nick and then wait for version two. And then I'll have, I'll ask him about that one as a second option to see, you know, can we render that, is there a way to to bring that into a three D world as well, um, and and we'll see where that goes, I'll have another report as we keep moving forward.
Okay.
Before we get to buying uniforms or other maps or things of that nature, so. All right, thank you very much for the conversation.
All right. Moving on to new business, consider girls wrestling. Go ahead, Mister Dolberg.
All right, I have a couple of handles that I brought with me. Uh, the first handle is just kind of some bullet pointed information on uh, kinda like my ask, if you will, of uh, the school boards this evening, um, it also goes, the bullet points, the rise of girls wrestling, the current state of uh, girls wrestling in the state of Wisconsin. Wrestling in Rochelle, and then uh, it tries to address, you know, some of the obstacles or hurdles, if you will, with really trying to start any sort of program, but more focused here with with girls wrestling. And the second um, the second document you have there is just a high level um, article written on uh, Wrestle Like a Girl website on the benefits that come from girls participating in the sport of wrestling. Uh, but actually, what I'm looking to do here is just kind of introduce the idea of um, of Rochelle starting a girls wrestling team and um, provide information to you, try to get questions, concerns that you can take away with me. Um, I guess my hope is that, you know, a case is made strong enough over the next month and at the next month meeting, um, there could be a decision made, um, the reason for, I guess, that timeline is that I think co-ops, the co-ops have to be in by April first. So, um, Al went and then opened mic earlier, you know, said that the Wittenburg School District could potentially introduce two to five participants within a co-op team, to have this co-op team, you know, year one, uh, that that co-op has to be into the WA by April first, so again, that's that's kind of like the timeline that I'm shooting for at at this time. Uh, I know I know Al suggested just kind of opening up the co-op to anybody, but for my specific focus, it was just trying to get that co-op in place year one with Wittenburg Burnhamwood. Um, I think when you create a co-op, they have to be in place for two years, um, so, you know, you create that co-op with Wittenburg Burnhamwood, you've got kind of two years to get a feel for building that program, seeing how how much support you get through Rochelle, which I think, you know, will be more than what we're probably all anticipating, um. So that's that's my ask for this evening, and with that, I won't go through this two page document word for word, but just some things I wanted to highlight, I've been running the youth program here in Rochelle, now this is my third year, uh, the first year was during COVID, uh, that year, we only had one girl participating in our youth program. Uh, this year, we've had seven uh, girls participating in our youth program, in talking to some of our parents who are currently involved or are in the community with girls who are supportive of their girls wrestling, we're expecting that number to grow to to ten plus girls being in our youth program next year. But the the question that I commonly get from parents is, as my daughter's participating in youth wrestling, where does this go, like where does this road lead? And, you know, Al, as Al mentioned, once you're, once boys and girls start hitting puberty, it like, at the youth age, you're seeing girls compete equally with with boys, right, and probably sometimes you're even better than boys, because just at that age level, girls kind of have a better attention span, whatever, right? But once they hit middle school, there becomes a significant change in in physical ability, right, strength, speed, et cetera, right? So the number one reason girls end up getting out of wrestling, coming out of youth, is that they're no longer able to compete, right, like they're now being, you know, I don't know how to put it, other just like they're physically punished during the course of competition, right, like it's no longer fun. And boys and girls start growing personalities where they're now, they're growing into young men and women, and it's it's a hand to hand combat sport, so. That that starts to become a barrier for them to continuing on, now, as you're starting to see high schools pick up a girls program, the biggest barrier to them coming into the sport is that, again, girls, you know, boys and girls now physically mature, like they 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 don't wanna cross gender with competition or even practice sometimes. So, uh, right now, on our eighth grade, on our middle school wrestling team, we have an eighth grade girl who's uh, you know, first year wrestler, really enjoying the sport, said she's gonna continue on with wrestling no matter whether there's a girls team or not. But she has shared that she has four to five friends in her grade who want to participate in wrestling, but they do not wanna practice with boys, they don't wanna compete with boys, right, so now there's there's that barrier showing up in Rochelle, where we have girls who are interested in the sport, but they're not, they're, they don't wanna cross that that obstacle, right, for that, um, that thing that's preventing them from from participating. Um, we actually lost a middle school girl wrestler this year because she's a sixth grade girl, she's done well as a youth, she's, you know, now in the middle school level, she's being expected to practice and continue to keep deep with boys, that's not of interest to her, so now she's kind of fallen by the wayside. She does participate in the girls only events that our youth team is going to, so she is kind of maintaining some activity within wrestling, but she will not practice with a middle school team because, you know, they're, she's gonna practice with the boys, and she's not competing in our middle school events, because she does not wanna compete with boys, but at the youth level, she's still doing the girls only events. Um, we have one freshman girl in the school this year that says that if a girls team starts, that she's all in, you know, to be part of our team, so when we're talking about numbers just from Rochelle, I'd expect that there would be five to six girls coming out from Rochelle, right, you combine that with potentially two to five girls from Wittenburg, you're now looking at a wrestling team of eight to ten girls. And if you uh, look into like um, the number of girls that teams are entering into tournaments, uh, you know, you're seeing very few teams at this moment that are, that have eight to twelve girls on a team, right, like there's some, there's two schools, I think, in the state, maybe three, that have fifteen to twenty girls out for the wrestling team, uh, but uh, there's a, you know, a couple of wrestling tournaments, I looked at, the Wrightstown Ladies Wrestling Invite and the. The Wisconsin Challenge Series, which is in Wausau, there's twenty to thirty teams there, uh, the Lancer Girls Invitational, there's thirty teams there, most girls teams right now are only one to four girls, so most of those girls are probably still practicing with the boys, um, but you are seeing teams start to show up with eight to ten girls, so if we put this co-op together, Rochelle immediately has probably one of the biggest girls wrestling teams in the state. Uh, Nacusa has a, almost a full squad wrestling team, Wausau West has got a, almost a full squad, uh, so there's starting to be more wrestling schools in the area. Um. What I've seen through, what I've seen through, kind of digging through numbers, is that uh, prior to two thousand eighteen, there was only, I think, five or six states that actually had a sanctioned state championship. Um, since two thousand eighteen, there's been over thirty states that have added a sanctioned state championship for girls wrestling, one of them being Wisconsin. Um, in that, uh, over the years, if you go back to two thousand five, there was only five thousand girls competing and wrestling at the high school level, and so i- in two thousand five, there's probably only a couple of states that had a sanction, if anybody, and they were all, everybody was wrestling with boys. You fast forward to the uh, last year, uh, twenty twenty two season, uh, that number, the number of girls in wrestling has climbed to thirty five thousand. Now, the number of girls participating this year is estimated to be at fifty two thousand, so if you think about that, in one year, that number has almost, that has grown by fifty percent, and and if you really think about it, with thirty states adding a state championship from two thousand eighteen on, now all these girls have that bridge from youth wrestling to get into high school wrestling, right? So there's no longer, I'm getting the middle school wrestling, I'm getting my butt kicked, butt kicked, wrestling sucks, now they quit, there's no place for them to go, so you have all these states starting to add that state championship, now there's that bridge, all right, I'm gone from youth, in a few years, when I get through these middle school years, I can, I can now compete in a s- uh, girls only state championship. So I think you're just gonna see the numbers continue to skyrocket across the nation, uh, today I had about a half hour conversation with the UWSP coach, that's somebody that uh, Al had mentioned earlier, uh, the year of COVID, there was two hundred and fifty girls that were participating in high school wrestling in the state of Wisconsin. Last year, there was four hundred, this year, there's seven hundred, right, so in one year, you've seen that number almost double, you take, let's say, just ten, ten schools, like Rochelle, now they're gonna be trying to start a girls program, you're gonna see probably another uh, two, three hundred girls start to join wrestling over the next year or two, right, like you're, there's gonna be over a thousand, like there's, like the freight trade's coming, and, you know, what I'm hoping to propose is that we get out ahead of it and we kind of capture the interest that's now being expressed in the school. Um, we have a nationally ranked girl who would like to be part of, you know, part of this program, um, it really becomes a launching pad for establishing a very strong foundation for a girls team for years to come. Um, USA Wrestling, I didn't bring that, there's a thirty page PowerPoint that's available to USA Wrestling, I should have brought my laptop to share slides, but one of the things they suggest is, as you're starting to build a program, you recruit these girls who are the most, they call it courageous, who are the most uh, most driven to be part of a girls wrestling team, and you use that, use them as an ambassador to recruit other girls, and you really give your uh, your program some uh, you know, some recognition and and respect immediately, right? So it's not, it's not, you know, pulling somebody that drove in from uh, Wittenburg that have a few years of wrestling experience, now we've got an eighth grader that's got, who's gonna have a year of experience on your belt, like you've you've got girls who are gonna be starting to show up in high school, um, you know, you're gonna, it's gonna be, there'll be a very credible wrestling team. Um, and then, to kind of piggyback off that ambassador idea, Brooke Al's daughter was part of our Stingers Youth Football Program, uh, was kind of very a beloved character and player, if you will, she had a very fond uh, bond following in Rochelle, um, having like her present being part of that co-op team, it's gonna continue to, like, that'll be a magnet to pull in other people to not even, not just participate, but support uh, to support that team.
Can, actually, how does a co-op work, I'm just, I mean, where does the.
Right.
Am I on now?
I can explain it from a hockey dad, the hockey administrator, um, but basically, depending how the co-op would be organized, there's a, there's a home team, and then other schools would, you know, if if we reach out, you know, do we, do we send word to Almond and Iola and Spash and Wittenburg all right away? Do we establish just the one that we know that there's a direct connection right away, um, but the reality is that there's, there's a whole school, and there's other schools that agree to participate in that, and then, you know, the finances are some of the things that I've seen it work different ways, because there's, there's, I've seen it where there's been a base fee to be a part of the co-op, and then a per, a per kid fee, so let's say that the total cost of a wrestling program is five thousand, and there's, you know, two wrestlers from Wittenburg, and there's seven from Rochelle, let's say, so there's nine wrestlers total, you divide that cost and distribute that based on percentage of use, I've seen that, I've also seen where we we just, okay, Rochelle's gonna run the program, and whatever people would come to to our our co-op, um, they would just pay our fee, our our athletic fee, and maybe that's all there is. Um, is there consideration for transportation, entry fees, those types of things, I don't know, um, Steve, I turned over you for any further commentary.
On the way co-ops work, we did the right ones, first of all, I got us in the next year's state tournament. The form was due on the first, I took it. Um, so that's done, as far as a team is concerned, co-ops, um, every school that's involved in a co-op that is in enrollment is involved in one. So right now, Wittenburg is at three twenty two, Wausau is at one seventy three, that means we would be in division two, because our enrollment is four hundred and ninety five, that's how that would work.
Is it just for that sport?
For the state, we wrestle against that, but that's, you know, just that's.
Right. Yeah, right.
Whatever sport we choose to co-op in, um, individually, though, we can get in any tournaments or any uh, meets, dual meets that would be available, right now, there are three available in the state, one's in Dial, one's in Salo, Wisconsin, and one's in Green Bay, and uh, I did talk to Dom, uh, got a center where it's, which are active, they have a team, and he says they can find meets and get involved. So there will be an expense as far as driving, we're gonna have to drive farther, because as you, like you said, as a team, who says it's all. Uh, there just aren't a lot, you'll have to travel to the, to the Green Bay area and Milwaukee area and that sort of stuff, perhaps, um, so we're looking at, we're not, um, so you'd have to decide whether you wanted to run as a standalone Rochelle only or a co-op, because that will change, we would not be in division at our, for instance.
But right now, there's, right now, there's only one state tournament for girls, because there's no divisions at this point.
There's just one division for now, but.
Yes, if it grows.
As opposed, there'll be divisions, of course, then you have to be ready for that, and we wouldn't be wrestling against um, Wittenburg by itself, so maybe, oh, that's how that works.
Is there a commitment, uh, is it two year commitment for a co-op?
It usually is. We could host their own stuff.
Is it optional, I mean, say, we start a program and say, Wittenburg, you don't do the co-op, but because Wittenburg doesn't offer a girls wrestling, can they just come and wrestle with us, or is that not, that's not?
If wrestling is offered at that school, you're gonna have to split.
Even though it's not a girls, it's a, it's a boy wrestling.
So. Al, we did, yes, if one includes it, you have to accept that you have a co-op. A co-op, and in the short term, it won't affect us, because it's only one state tournament, but once you're boarding more schools, the event's, you're out of your, your power. Financially, if you did get a new coach, yes, you have, whoever, um, we're looking at a bomb coming, certified, green, it's been covered in the travel, um, and entry fees, you'll hear about two or three hundred range, probably per event, if it's an invitational, if it's a dual meet, then it's usually nothing, but we're gonna forty bucks allocated for the free.
And there would be a uniform.
Uniforms, uniforms, we've got a full set, which is what I would suggest, I would not suggest just give five or six, I'd give a full set, um, the full set of uniforms, about this year, would be just about seven hundred bucks, that's for boys, so some of it would be seven hundred, a thousand, it would be the initial cost of uniforms for girls. So we're gonna find four or five that I'd start with, and three or four to continue it until our members are sufficiently open to us, separate coaching, now, we talked about, it's not one of your girls, or girls not one of your boys in practice, if we would do it that way, would we have four or five girls in Rochelle, two, four or five girls in Wittenburg, and then boys in Rochelle, and we only asked you to be the coach, and we'd almost have the co-op together, right?
Right, potentially, and.
Would that affect some of the girls wanting to wrestle?
Because I'm coaching the boys.
Could you coach them, could could you coach them at the same time, have them wrestle aside, have the girls wrestle aside?
Yeah.
Or would it have to be two different practices?
It doesn't have to be two different practices, I mean, wrestling is wrestling, right?
But I'm asking, uh, girls, some of the girls, they didn't wanna wrestle.
Would they be comfortable in the same room as the boys?
They don't wanna wrestle, like I was wrestling.
Yeah, but they don't wanna wrestle each other.
And I stopped in middle school, because it's uncomfortable as a girl.
Yeah.
To go up against a guy who might come and date.
Right.
So we, I mean, we don't know.
We're gonna defer you and Russ, and you're going to make sure that.
Correct. Correct, and so, looking at the options for coaches too, right, like UWSP has a program, and in a conversation with this, uh, coach, was it Wozenak, he's, he's got several wrestlers on his team that would be interested in coaching a girls team here in Rochelle, uh, you know, he couldn't give you like, this would be your coach this year, but he says he's got, the girls that are on the team are looking to stay involved in the sport, and this is be a great opportunity for them to come, they practice every day, two to three thirty, he said that, you know, those girls could shower, make trip to Rochelle, and then make girls only uh, wrestling practice, right? And he said that they've got a whole bunch of girls who are still helping the university, like they run out of their uh.
Elder ability.
Elder ability, they're still there helping the university team, right, so now, being a volunteer assistant for the university, they also pick additional coaching experience in Rochelle, so there's, there's definitely options for coaches, and it could be a girl, like a woman coach, that that is coaching them. Um, some of the tournaments that are going to, there are starting to be girls only divisions, right, so now you have an opportunity to split trans, like your, same teams using, sharing transportation to the same event, right? And so, if the girls rest, uh, girls team comes to fruition, my plan would be to start going through the list of tournaments in the state, find those that are supporting boys divisions, girls divisions, that way, we're cutting down on transportation costs. Um, but, I, you know, some of these tournaments, uh, like the Anavol Tournament, we started our year off, they have eight girls, they have eight girls teams showing up and participating in that competition. they have eight girls teams showing up and participating in that competition, right? So now right out of the gates, we're going to a competition, there's eight other teams, eight other girls teams present. Um, you know, some of the other ones that are more local, the, the numbers of girls aren't that high. So now you're gonna try to get them additional matches, you would have to travel, uh, a little further, right? But there's, there's definitely an opportunity there, there for those girls to pick up, uh, competition and matches. Um, but that there are also opportunities to apply for grants, like because, uh, girls wrestling or women's wrestling is considered an emerging sport. There's a lot of foundations and organizations out there that take application for grants that they're giving out to start girls wrestling teams, right? So if we're saying four to five thousand dollars out of the gates, there's a potential to apply for and receive a grant to help pay for that. Um, you know, Mr. Hoffman here, his, him and his wife run a fundraising business, right? So if we need to raise funds so that the school's not putting a single dollar into the program year one or even the first two years, which I think is what you've done with the skiing program, like there's opportunities to raise those funds to pay for all the transportation costs, potentially pay for a co, potentially pay for a coach and to pay for the singlets, right? So, like, you know, Al and I talking prior to this meeting, like we wanna take all of those obstacles out, out of the way, right? So if, like, the financial is the issue, we'll raise the funds or get donors to pay for it to get this started, right? Like we're not asking the, we're not asking the school for money, we'll pay for it.
You're asking me, I'm a Canadian, we host eleven sports in high school, I have eleven sports in middle school, six boys, five girls. I would be for it. Six to six, every three years we gotta send a, a big form to the, to the DPI, talk about equity. Make it a lot easier if we were six to six. Because the girls sports opportunities in the winter are difficult, we don't have a pool, we don't wanna start gymnastics, I don't know if we can do it for girls. And, uh, maybe.
Or teach it at least.
And that's it, so I, I would be all for, from, from, from just the equity point of view, I'd be all for even things out and giving girls a chance.
And I would echo, uh, my support as a, as a wrestling official, um, I've seen group, the girls involvement, you know, stop at the high school because there hasn't been teams. Well, last year was our first state tournament for girls, the first multi duels held a couple of weeks ago at UWSP where there was six girls only teams that came together for a multiple duel, the first one in the state. So the business side of me and the, the school leader says, you know, this is a chance to get on basically a ground floor of something that is emerging, okay? So whether it's a co-op, whether we, you know, just have Rochelle, whatever it might be, um, as a proponent for opportunities for students, this is a good opportunity, I see it, to join a sport that's on the cusp of just exploding and could potentially have more people come to Rochelle, but they'll beat you up. They say, wow, this is a pretty good school, I have wonderful opportunities, maybe the future, you know, a couple, maybe the little siblings or something, maybe they do come to school here then. You know, and maybe all of a sudden we have a central Wisconsin wrestling powerhouse from a girls standpoint that goes and can compete with Los Angeles and the Holmans and the Chayauts and the Bonwells and wherever else that they have the, uh, the girls program. Uh, also, as Luke mentioned earlier, it is a hand-to-hand combat, kinda hand-to-hand sport. So whether it's karate, jiu-jitsu, that can only help girls defend themselves if they're ever in a situation where they need to, you know, because you learn pressure, you learn, you learn those types of things. So to have that ability to defend yourself, uh, when you get older or even, you know, in high school or something, I, I, that's another added benefit. So, um, I'd like, like, Luke, I'm in favor of the idea and the concept of starting girls team, I think initially regardless of how many students we have. Right now we have six boys, but we'll work through to do the injury and some of those things. So e- even if we have six, okay, we have six and six, you know, what's right, let's try the co-op. Let's see how we can try to foster an opportunity for girls to continue to wrestle. And then who knows, after two-year co-op, maybe we in, in, include other teams, maybe we have more girls that are, that are wrestling and, and, you know, maybe the middle, two-year, more middle school kids come out, who knows, maybe we have a full team. You don't know the unknown future, what I do know is it's an opportunity for kids, it's an emergency sport, it allows them to learn some defense skills. Those are all positive. Eagles out our school, title, title nine with six to six, again, those are all positives.
Um, as I stated before, excuse my name, he was the first in state, Ryle, uh, the Stowe Central, Salem, and Green Bay area. They're looking for a girls only, girls three, the one and all of it, we already dealt with four. I think that they want to come across the pipeline as we get more and more interested.
Well, they're new, they're showcasing our girls team.
That's good, I knew that was coming, I knew that was gonna happen.
All right, now, I, I wanna say something, I am all for the girls, okay? But with the political atmosphere we have right now with the wokeness and all this stuff, are we gonna open up ourselves to some type of, someone that considers themselves as a man or a boy and then they're gonna go in to be a woman, they wanna wrestle a woman up? I'm just opening that up, the political thing that's going around now, is that gonna be a lot of.
Right, I mean, I totally get that, right, but we can't wrestle away, run away from opportunity for girls.
I, I am all for the girls, but are we gonna be running some other type of legal stuff?
Can you, WA guidance on that? So that it's, that's, they have that written, so.
So if a guy is, so if a guy, if, if a boy decides and he wants to be a girl, he can't be a girl.
There's a whole process for that, I, I'm not gonna say.
That's what I'm just saying, I'm just asking now. See, I mean, is that a legitimate question?
I just wanna add one more thing. Steve, Steve mentioned opportunity, um, I have a friend that lives in Bultico, actually moving now to Eau Claire. His daughter received a college scholarship for wrestling at the University of Sioux Falls. There's an opportunity, she loves wrestling, has to go to college now and, that's opportunity.
Yeah, um, talking about the college wrestling, so right now with the NCAA, it's an emerging, it's an emerging sport. So it's not really regulated like a normal, like NCAA football is and there's different divisions. There's just one division for girls NCAA, uh, wrestling. Um, there's, if you think right around a hundred and fifty colleges, uh, and universities in the nation and in Canada that offer women's wrestling. Uh, there's four just in the state of Wisconsin alone that offer women's wrestling. Uh, Lakeland, for instance, it's a D-three, uh, NCAA school, they're able to give out full rides. And their first year, their first year, they give out full ride to a girl, she won a national championship her first year. Um, UWSP with the UW system, they're not gonna give out scholarships, anything like that. But there is teams, there are colleges throughout the country that add women's wrestling. I see it on my Facebook thing, uh, Wrestle Like A Girl Facebook page and breaking the stereotype, women's wrestling pages and there's a ton of them. Uh, there is almost, if not every week, every two weeks, there is a team saying, hey, we're, we're adding girls wrestling as a sport at our school, uh, there are scholarship academic opportunities, athletic and academic. Um, and, uh, existing colleges, they'll post their pictures of their teams and they'll have like five, six girls. Like you said, like, like Jake at UWSP, he wants three girls, that's, that's, that's a typical wrestling team, um, for the boys and that's what they want for the typical girls. So the, and I also talked with all, quite a few people in the last two months, I go, with the expansion of girls wrestling in college is, I, I gave him a, just a hypothetical, if I'm a junior girl starting out wrestling and if I lost my hump, what are my prospects in college? He says, they're going to college for free, for the most part for free. There's just, they have it, they just need, they need the numbers, they need the numbers.
Anybody else have any other questions? So I think we take this in the closed session, right? Can we talk about it or whether we do? You can tell me.
Well, we can either have a motion now, we can, um, table it something next month, we wanna talk more about it, um. I don't know that it's a closed session.
Okay, I, I don't know.
I'm talking about a specific individual or a specific.
Cause I know I feel about it, Matt, do you have any concerns, what are your concerns? I don't know, I mean, I know my personal feelings, I'm honest on it, so.
James, do you have concerns? I mean, did you?
I'm like. I mean, if it's up, I mean, I would one hundred percent say I would give the co-op a try for two years and, and just open up to Wittenburg. You know, if we start, start offering to Iola, Amherst, Point, yes, we're gonna pick some girls off of that program. But now all of a sudden, it's a big, it's a big deal, you know, now you're trying to coordinate five schools or four schools.
Legitimately, it's a challenge.
It's just gonna be too tough, I mean, Wittenburg's close, I drive it every day, I take my girls to Slim every day there, so.
Lee, you have any questions?
I think we should give the girls a shot, see, you know, there were girls here the other night from the other schools.
Right.
And they were wrestling for it.
Yeah, so that middle school age group, they're part of a special wrestling conference, a northeast valley wrestling conference. And they've gotten to the point that enough girls competing at the middle school level, they're talking about starting the only girls events. They're not quite there, but I'm guessing in the next year or two, it's, like, that's gonna happen, so. Uh, and I've been around that conference now for five years and every year there's more girls participating at the middle school level.
Um, I'm, I'm all for it, I mean, I just, I don't understand the co-op and who's responsible for what part of the money and who. That, that's, it's not my concern, but.
That's a part we'd have to discuss, see how we wanna run that.
How they, who does, I mean, do you love it, Luke and Steve and the people that are familiar with it? Get together and decide this is what the co-op is or is it like a master thing that says if you run a co-op, these are things you should consider or things that, I don't know.
Well, I would move to go ahead and set up a committee to research the co-op. Yeah, I mean, you know, Steve and Mr. Hoffman and you, Luke and, you know, I don't know, but there's so many questions that we don't know.
So if we set up a committee.
Well, I, I, I think, no, I think we should do it, but I just, I think we need to have somebody, I think we should go with the two, that's my opinion, we should go on with the co-op for two years. And right now just leave, Luke is our coach, unless it just becomes an overload and you need a volunteer coach or an assistant coach for the girls coming through. But what I, I just wanna make sure that we, that everybody gets involved, with people coming from Wittenburg, they understand what they have to pay or what they don't have to pay, you know, what is our responsibility as Rochelle, what is their responsibility?
So I would recommend then that, that there seems to be, you know, a support for this. I would recommend approving girls wrestling as an option for next year. And then that allows then, and with, with the idea that we're gonna develop a co-op, that would give Steve and I a chance to deal with Mr. Hoffman and, um, and with Steve and get, earn their interest and then work out those and then next month, Steve and I can present a co-op package, if you will, to say, this would be the co-op, these are rules and responsibilities of, of each of the, of the schools involved.
Yeah, you have to give us a chance to build a schedule right now, it's only four months ago, we haven't looked very far. So, I mean, I figured out, yeah, four months, according to our.
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't need this.
Nine hundred and forty-four months of education.
We don't, we don't need a, we don't need a schedule to approve the co-op. Uh, I mean, the, the, the co-op and the logistics to the co-op, after we get that, then we look for the.
We need a schedule to figure out the finances.
Well, yeah, but I mean, if we have a certain amount, we kinda know.
You know, if it's certified, okay, and then let's do some fundraising and let's donate that, you know, help, help this out, so. It wouldn't take much to, small fundraiser, raise, to raise our money.
So do we want to have a motion to approve?
I'll restate my motion to set up.
Okay, thank you.
The work.
I will second that motion.
And let them, send them to go ahead and do the research instead of the co-op.
And a second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this both, okay. Madam Sharnes, you are you?
That matter, James, with the second.
Yeah, I love it, so, the more that, the better, the better.
I mean, I guess if the numbers get so big that we, we're gonna need to answer.
Correct.
Thanks for starting.
Thank you.
All right, open enrollments.
All right, we have a couple of open enrollments, um. We have, oh, I have no preview because it's in your trash, remove the first one, open enroll again.
No, the open enroll.
I tried to look at it, says no preview available, file is in the first trash.
It's like it comes up online.
You get it?
Oh, no, it's just, it's in the trash, I'm sorry.
See?
I'm sorry.
Um, so we had a.
It's a, it's a four K student.
A four K student, um, open enrolling into the district. Yes, see papers.
Papers.
All right.
Our technology, exactly. Um, all right, so the first one is a, a four-year-old open enroll in, um. I don't remember if there was a reason, I mean, they live, were.
No, they live in Monia?
Uh, no, no, that was a different one, this is, they live at Stevens Point but wanna come here for four K. So, and it doesn't, I mean, with four K, you don't know if there's an IP or anything of that nature, um, so I don't why we would not allow for a pre-K. Okay, so that's the first one, um, second one, this one I have, no, I know what it says, that's moving too. All right, so then the second one would be a, um, open enroll out. This one is, uh, an individual that's in the DCEvers district, open enrolled already, is currently attending DCE and wants to continue to, to attend DCE next year, um.
They moved into the district, but.
Thank you.
What happened?
So, um, again, one of those examples where we go to DCEvers, we move into the Rochelle district, we wanna keep going to DCEvers. Uh, we have another one that is, and these are all, uh, the, the remaining three are also, are open enrolled outs. Um, we have a high school student that is open enrolled to Tomorrow River and now they would like to, as they enter the ninth grade year, they'd like to go to Stevens Point because that's the junior high setup, so that would be the last year of junior high, um, so switching from open enrolling to Amherst to open enrolling to Stevens Point. And the final one, um, we have a bit of a question on this one because they were enrolled last year as a four K student to Stevens Point.
No, that's a duplicate, that's correct.
That's the one we can leave, okay, never mind, so that one's out. So we really have three, one open enroll in as a four K'er and two open enrolled outs that are, they haven't been our student, we've already approved them. Um, Tricia and I did talk with DPI, well, Tricia talked with DPI and asked questions because, um, we've seen a couple come in, like this other one, this other example was a four K student that opened enrolled out last year and now they're re, reapplying to open enroll, uh, enroll out as a fifth, a five K'er to the same school. We're like, why do they have to do it every year? We thought maybe because if you go from kindergarten to, from four K to five K and then again when you go from like elementary to middle school and then when you go from middle school to high school, the school district might make you apply again. And we found out that's usually not the case, once they're approved, they don't have to continually, uh, um, open enroll out. So that one is taken off, that's a duplicate, we'll delete that request because they've already been approved. So we really have the four K coming in and we have the two open enroll outs that have never attended Rochelle.
Okay, do you have a motion, Steve?
Thank you.
Okay, listen, okay, um, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Lee, okay, so all those in favor of considering the open enrollments in and out, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those pose, absent, okay, motion was carried. Entry, entry door updates.
I'm gonna turn this back on because we, uh, have an updated quote. Um, the one I included in the, in the board packet was actually a quote without the reader card. So basically what this is, we are, um, when I say we, Dan and I have met with technology upgrades to our door systems and we took a look and, and this is kind of a stare, a step process. So the proposal with the, with this, this proposal here for to tune up eight thousand dollars, the other one was fifty-five hundred, but that didn't involve any reader cards, so that was about fifteen hundred and that totaled about seven. Then we went around and, and we looked at some of the, um, what the company had stated and we said, well, that's not exactly correct because the size of the reader on different doors, they're different sizes, so, um, that was interesting. We don't have a second bid because everybody else that Dan talked to, correct me if I'm wrong, but they talked about ripping out our current system and then putting an entirely new system in. This company said we can use what's there and just add two, you know, we can add the HOD reader. So basically we have the little black fog right now. Um, one of the, one of the ideas that, that Dan and I have from a technology standpoint is to utilize a, a scan into our copiers to print, um, that way, you know, we have a ton of colored copies that sit over there, we throw them away and those become expensive, um, and it's just from a security standpoint, some people do print things that, that need to be, that should be secured and then all of a sudden we have a, a student come in and say, oh, my teacher printed something for me and now there's something that's. and then all of a sudden we have a, a student come in and say, oh, my teacher prints something for me, and now there's something that's confidential that's sitting on the printer that, that we need to clean up. This would allow us to, to clean that up, but that would be like the second step. In order to do that, you need a HID reader or an HID card, which is more like the, um, like a badge, like an ID, and you can scan in. So, the first step would be to take this and use that on our outside doors. It would also allow us to take in all of the current fobs and then reallocate new fobs to those people that were using them to try to get a handle, a little bit better handle on, on how many we have out there. Um, the cards are about six bucks a piece, so, you know, you could program, you know, program access to, to where they are. So, if somebody goes inactive, if they don't bring it back, you know, you're out six bucks, but it's not that expensive. Um, second phase would be to then potentially utilize the same reader in our copier system, so you can scan into that. And a third phase would be if we can get the COPS grant, um, Dan and I are gonna work on a COPS grant, uh, which is funding to, for safety and security. We would apply for doing all of our internal doors, um, in a, in a reader format. Because that way, if there would be a fire, you could automatically just unlock all the doors to the fire because firefighters want doors shut, lights off, unlock doors to go in and, and try to rescue people and put out flames. On the other hand, if there would ever be like a, an intruder situation, one presses a button, every single door is locked instantaneously and teachers don't have to worry about defunding with the key, they just close the door, it's automatically locked, in that type of safety and security system. If we could ever get that grant and, and do that, that would also allow us to give the shares department one card that is unlimited access to our building, so they can just go through things. And so, that's the third phase of this technology update. Now, we're not gonna do that if we don't get the grant, because that's really expensive.
You could give that one of those to the fire department.
Correct, so, now ideally, we should be unlocked for the fire department, if there's a fire, because you can program that in, but they would have one too in case it was locked. My, my concern with fire is that if all of a sudden we have a fire, there were burning wires and things of that nature, and flame and, and stuff, are those going to work in every door? That's why before that would happen, when we first have a fire, unlock every door. You know, that way they, they would have access and wouldn't need the card, um, but yes, they would have a card as well. Any, any emergency personnel would have EMTs that would be coming, you know, we would have a, a card that they would have.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
But that's why we don't have a second bid. And something of this value normally would have a second bid.
So, are all these cards, so I, I mean, I'm quite a bit of a test situation, um.
Perfect.
So, are, are all these cards program, pro- programmable? As in like, say, you get an ID on a card and it's say six, seven, four, can you set that up for access? They're allowed to come in this door, that door, this door, they cannot go in this door?
Yes.
And then if they get terminated, whether they leave or whatever, you can just go on a computer system, click them out, deactivate it, that's done, it's just simple, easy.
Yeah.
Stuff to do.
Yeah, and then, and if we do get the cop grant, what's the, the really cool thing about it is we don't have to collect keys anymore, you know, like, 'cause I don't wanna say there's a key problem, but there's kind of a key problem now. Yeah, I, I carry around a set like that, and I walk up to a door and then we're moving doors around and stuff like that, so, yes.
And the eventual goal, when we eliminate everything. And the cost of rekeying in case somebody would lose their keys, and they have a master key or something, now you gotta go through, what's the cost? It, it's not cheap to rekey every, relock every door.
Is that the only company you guys have reached out to, is Lampen?
Lampen is, is our current vendor for our doors, so that's what they know, that's where we started. I reach out to Heartland, uh, they're giving me a quote, I reach out to Marco, they're giving me a quote, too, so.
Do you know how many doors there are that could be, 'cause they're gonna use the same system, the same wiring system?
So, like, for this, uh, for this pro, uh, for this, um, project, everything would stay. Um, all they would do is follow the readers. Um, now, the, the nice thing about our system is three main entrances have, uh, video readers and that's why we kinda wanted to stay with, within this kinda realm, because it's kinda nice to see what, who's at the, the door, so. I'm not opposed to it at all, so, I mean, I've already got both of the wiring there anyways, so.
'Cause is it, is it wireless or is this all?
It's all hardware. So, I have a network wire going to each door, and actually, all of our doors have sensors on them. So, even if it doesn't have a reader, it's got a sensor if the door's locked or not, so.
And that gets related to.
It goes out of our network and then into the server.
So, if there are any questions, I guess, you know, the, in, in our minds, this is the first step of a three-phase, a three-step process.
I mean, that price is.
Well, considering to, to do a key fob system on a brand-new door, I mean, you're looking at close to three grand.
That's, that, that price is super cheap.
Per door.
That's super cheap to do this, well.
Yeah.
I mean, we do, I, I, so we do an access control system for every business out there and typically it's thirty-five hundred bucks, a thousand dollars a door.
A door?
A door.
Yeah. All they gotta put the, uh, catches in, they gotta put the relay box up.
And that's what's gonna be happening on every door eventually, you'd have to put that, you know, that catch in there.
Well, potentially, if, if we would get the grant to do the inside, we're talking a hundred and eighty doors, that'd potentially four thousand a door.
Right.
We don't have a budget for that.
Now, we're gonna do it on closets, you know?
It's like all your entry stores that are.
Mostly if you start with, we're just doing the outside doors.
Yeah, these are the current outside doors that currently have readers on them, so not every outside door, it's just the ones that currently have readers. Making that go from the black fob to an HID fob, which would be more of a credit card.
Can we also do, use?
That's a different system, not with this system, but, so with that near-field communication, yeah, it is kinda nice to do that. Where you look up at the proxy, and if you're within five feet, it'll actually.
Yep, yeah, ours is just, either your phone or your, or your card reader.
It's like, but with that one, I believe they said we would have to like rip it from the place.
We need a motion for this?
Yes, we do need a motion.
Us is a hard bid.
Listen, we're not waiting for any other bids, right?
Um, well, I'm, I'm waiting for them, but I don't know if they're gonna totally be apples to apples because some of these vendors won't work with Paxton, which is the system.
How long are they warranting this stuff, the equipment?
What do you say, warranting the equipment, it's, I can ask that, um, so like, electric damage, I can definitely ask that.
Um, it should be, I mean, it should be three to five years.
I think that's what it was, now, that system was in prior to coming here, so that's almost ten years ago.
As long as they're upgrading, they should update their warranty, 'cause they're, you know, they're plugging to it, so it should.
Exactly.
An updated warranty, three to five.
I can get some higher permission.
From when they install this and it's part of it then.
So, do we want to table this until next time, or do you wanna go with this bid that we have now? And if Dan comes across something that's like the warranty is what we want it to be, three to five years, then you can bring it back to us? Or do we just go with it, now you're saying this is a good price?
I can't imagine you're gonna find it cheaper.
Okay.
If, if you're looking at just, you know, point of it such that they're able to use the current, if they can't use the current stuff, there's no way it's that price.
Yeah.
You're talking two hundred thousand dollars, you know, two hundred fifty thousand. But if, if they're gonna use this system and it's something that we're, it's right here and we're familiar with it.
So, Dan, this is for the, the outside doors, do we, I mean, there's three steps, the one was the outside doors.
Yep.
And then the second step was the copy system, do we have to pay additional for, for the copy system or?
Well, our copiers have been overdue for the last year.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I've been stretching life on those for a while.
So, in other words, we're just basically voting on this first step?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, that's what I'm.
The replacement of the readers on the doors and the purchase of how many cards?
Uh, four hundred.
Four hundred digital cards.
So, then everybody will turn, everybody will turn in their fobs and they will actually know how many.
No, just be the event.
Well, we'll just deactivate them, 'cause they don't, they won't work for us anymore.
Oh, okay.
We collect and make a big keychain.
Yeah.
Or anchor.
Maybe somebody could make eyes design it, but, okay, so do we have a motion?
Oh, motion.
Okay, was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, okay. All right, now, consider going into closed session by the Wisconsin State statute in section nineteen point eight, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of, of any public employee over which the governmental jurisdiction exercises responsibility and financially, medical, social, and personal histories or disciplinary data of a specific person. Preliminary consideration of specific personal problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons except by a par, a par which if discussed in public would likely have to be a substantial adverse effect on the reputation, rep, no. A person referred to in such histories or data involved in problems or investigation. So, I need a motion, is what we're gonna be talking about, staff performance evaluations, I need a motion to. James, you have a second?
I'll second.
Lee, okay, we're going to go into position and.